Wait a moment. If you look at IC in the Middle East, you begin to look at it that their ultimate goal is the United States. Don't forget 9/11. If Nigeria is allowed to implode, which I think is imploding because of these existential threats coming from different dimensions, I tell you, US is the ultimate target. And what we are saying is that why don't we work together to be able to save US homeland security? It is better to defend, it is better to actually prevent America from being attacked. So if American is helping Nigeria and that those countries, US ultimately is helping herself as well. Because the element, the radical elements are actually trying to destroy. So now, we are here today and we are asking US citizens and US government to take action about this existential threat. So, we are here with victims who actually have experienced hostilities and persecution. And also, we are here also to appeal to your conscience to like, let humanity that is in us help us to advocate for these victims. On that note, I would like to thank you today that we are concerned and resolute. We have different organizations working together with us and this is a coalition. And this coalition one is to defeat terrorism in Nigeria and the Lake Chad region. Is to make sure religious freedom, religious right of every citizen in these countries I've mentioned are protected. And also, I'm looking at it that if you talk about fragility of Nigeria and the Lake Chad region, the question that comes to mind is that China tries when there is instability. So it's also good for the United States to monitor what China is doing in Africa, especially in Nigeria. Because you, uh, China plunders economy that is vulnerable. And Nigeria economy, Nigeria's security is vulnerable. On this note, US, that is a bastion of democracy, rule of law, and all other values should stand with us. And why is it important for Dallas? If you remember, if you begin to look at it, of all the values, I think we still look at Texas state as a bastion of trying to make sure every human being lives to experience their dream. Every human being is protected. And you begin to look at it that out of this, you have your lawmakers and congressmen and women who actually stand for this group. So can you amplify and elevate, elevate this message with us? Please tell it to others who are here in Texas. Tell it to other friends who are based elsewhere in the United States of America. Because we must work together to defeat this terrorism. And that is our appeal today. God bless you all. God bless his church. God bless the United States of America and God bless Nigeria. Thank you.
Well, I, I must thank Stephen Anada for his enlightened speech. I must also thank the diaspora leaders who are seated in the crowd. You have not been recognized personally, but you're here. And we give God praise for your life. Some of you received the message only one hour ago in UK. Some others received it about six hours ago and they're struggling with their schedule. And, and I know they will come, um, bit by bit. But we have other things that we must do. The issue at hand is how does the coming of Rebecca Sharibo, the mother of Leah Sharibo, how can it change the trajectory of engagement in the Sahelian region of Africa? What can we as Americans do? We are privileged as leaders in the diaspora. We have a homeland that we come from. We have a homeland that has ourself to ourselves. So we are people that have two places that we can go. How can we be a blessing? And for our friends who are Americans, how can you help us to spread this news? To spread this message? Every man has a right to life, liberty, and pursuit of what?
Happiness.
Happiness, help me. There are many, many, many children tonight that cannot be happy. Many mothers that the life of their spouses have been slapped out. Many people, especially our beloved Sarah, I mean Leah, our beloved Leah, who in 2018 has been made a prisoner of conscience. We will not stand for this. We are calling on the president of Nigeria and the people, the people that surround him to say, please bring back Leah. Give us back our daughter. And we are calling on the government of America to say, help us to tell Bababou阿瑞 to please, help us to get our daughter. We are not being rude, we are not being impetuous, or we want Leah back. Do we want Leah back?
Yes.
And you, I mean, you, are, are you convinced? Do we want Leah back?
Yes.
Thank you. Now, to somebody that is, that has really been invested in helping us to think about how to get Leah back is the president of Save the Persecuted Christians. Frank Gaffney, I have seen his commitment and dedication in very high places to supporting the freedom of Christians all over the world and especially in Sahelian Africa. I would like to invite the president of Save the Persecuted Christians.
I want to say thank you very much, first of all to you, Dr. Shio, and to Pastor, and of course to all of you for turning out this evening to join us in welcoming this amazing delegation from Nigeria of persecuted Christians. They are, I'm quite sure, among the most impressive, courageous, and impactful people I have ever met. And I've had the chance to see that and to form that impression over the past two weeks, thanks to Stephen Anada and his colleagues at Icon, DeeDee Logerson, my colleague at Save the Persecuted Christians, and a whole host of characters who come together to lift these men and women up and help them tell the truth about what is happening in their country. A truth that unfortunately has become in very short supply at the moment, not just in Nigeria, but in the United States of America. In fact, just last Friday, a report was issued by the United States Department of State about persecution of religious minorities around the world. And to be sure, Nigeria was mentioned. But I believe that persecution of Christians was not addressed at all. We're in the midst of what is now increasingly taking on the proportions of a genocide conducted by jihadists, whether it's Boko Haram, or whether it's the Fulani militants, or whether it's the Islamic State. This is taking place in the most populous nation in Africa. Where about half the population seems either aligned with or at least tolerant of these jihadis. And their agenda to drive out the other half. The first being, of course, the Muslim population, the other half being the Christian. And what's so alarming is that the effect of these rampages, these horrific crimes against humanity that are now taking place against the Christian people of Nigeria is that not only will it be a terrible, terrible catastrophe, of course, for Nigeria, if they are driven out. Many of them, of course, killed, or maimed, or tortured along the way. But many of them driven out, because where will they go? There's really no place in Africa that can accommodate millions, to say nothing of tens of millions of people from Nigeria. Nor for that matter is there really any place else in the world. We saw what two or three million people from another land did to Europe recently. I can tell you, there's not much appetite in that continent to take millions more. Nor will there be in our own hemisphere or here. So this is a true humanitarian catastrophe, I think. But when you add on top of that the prospect that the effects of driving the Christians out of the areas of Nigeria they currently largely inhabit will be to relinquish to these various jihadists the enormous natural wealth of the country. The oil, the gas, the minerals. Giving rise to a jihadist superstate that will make the one that President Trump rightly deserves credit for helping to dismantle in Syria and Iraq, known as the Islamic State, pale by comparison. So these are the stakes, ladies and gentlemen, in this particular microcosm of the global problem of anti-Christian persecution. That it will be a disaster for the world. One that we can, I believe, prevent from running its course if we act now. So with the immense help and inspiring example of these brave men and women, proud to say our Save the Persecuted Christians team and Dr. Shio's and of course Stephen Anada's have done something that I frankly didn't think was possible. We raised the alarm in official Washington. It is not an accident that the Vice President of Nigeria is going to have what I think is very called, I may, this sounds superstitious, a come-to-Jesus meeting with the Vice President of the United States. Tomorrow. Thanks to these men and women and their personal testimony of what the true state of affairs is in Nigeria. Not the Hertzman, just a resource conflict caused by global warming. Incredible as it may sound, ladies and gentlemen, in spite of what we know, this is not just the official line of the government of Nigeria, the Fulani-dominated government of Nigeria. That's the narrative of our own Department of State. To the point that I'm not sure until this Nigeria crisis delegation arrived, the people elsewhere in our government actually knew what the true state of affairs was. So let me conclude by just saying thank you again, most especially to the several people in this room and one or two others who aren't with us today, who have put their lives on the line to come and speak truth.
I must warn you not to never go to brigades. Do you agree with that?
Yes.
So to, to, to continue the discussion, it would be wrong of me not to talk, not to invite the big pin, the last big pin in the, in the oppressions that backed these amazing men, man and women. DeeDee, amazing DeeDee. She, DeeDee is a fighter, a general. You're welcome. Would you just say a few words on how God encouraged you to be an advocate for the voices in Nigeria and across the world?
Thank you, Dr. Shio. It is such an honor and a privilege to be here and to help lift the ship, lift the voices of, of the people in Nigeria. You know, and for me, I'm so humbled by all of this because I'm just a mom from Colorado. I have six boys and a husband and they're waiting for me back in Colorado. They've let me come to Washington DC for the whole month so that I could attend to this Nigerian delegation because he has watched me have sleepless nights, just endless, sleepless nights of worry and concern for what has been happening in Nigeria. Her story has just ripped at my heart for, for more than a year. And, and then when I saw what was happening to the Adara Chieftain in Kaduna State, 95% Christian tribe just being wiped away by writ from this Fulani Muslim governor and, and they didn't even know it. And being placed under the authority of a Muslim Emir and then being mercilessly slaughtered from mid-February through April. It was just something that I, as a mom to children, could not stand by and watch. I am an American Christian mom who will not stand for this kind of tyranny to reign in my world. And my nation, being a Christian nation, must stand with the Christians from Nigeria. And so, this small voice working with this incredible organization that is now Save the Persecuted Christians. We have a coalition of more than 160 different groups who have come together. These groups, they provide symptomatic relief. They, they care for people who have been so viciously harmed out there in the world. And yet, their big concern is that Americans don't know what's happening to Christians on a genocidal level in a rising number of countries around the world. And if we don't do something now, we are going to see a plague of darkness unfold around the world that our children will inherit. And, and I don't want to see that happen for my children or yours or for the people of Nigeria, for the people of Pakistan, India, Indonesia, and, and all over the Middle East and everywhere in Africa and in Europe and even here now in the United States. We are seeing so much push against Christians. We have been, the narrative has been twisted and, and now they say that, that Christians are the bad guys. Well, I'm sorry, we are not. We bring salt and light into the world. We care for our neighbor, we call us a brother. It's not what I do, it's loving my neighbor. And I love people of all faith, I really do. I, I know that Muslims oftentimes are, they receive some of the, the weight of, of the violence that is happening. Muslim, Muslim violence is horrible and that, really, we saw that all over the Middle East. And we, when, when Christians are attacked, everybody is harmed. And, and if Christians are not in the world, then the world has lost its, its hope and its, and its place for mercy. So, I'm just a defender and a champion for Jesus and I, I'm one small voice, but united, many, many voices can become a movement that says, no more, no more. We are not pushovers because we're Christian. We're strong because we're Christian. And the world is a stronger, better place because of it. And so I've just been doing my small part to lift my voice. And because of that, the Adara leaders are free. The Adara leaders are free. And this story has been brought to the top levels of the, of the political offices in the United States of America. And I'm just so, my jaw is on the ground to see what the Lord is doing through people who continuously say yes to Him. This is not my doing, this is God's doing. And He has afforded the opportunities and He is on the move and I'm just trying to keep up with it.
You know, yes, yesterday I was reading an article about women in Congress. And I said, I texted her, I said, what about us? We need godly Congresswomen. Come on, we don't have to go and beg. We want to be there.
Yes.
Come and make your way. And you know, I want...
I'm not looking to run for office and I think Frank would be pretty upset if I left him now.
Frank, come on, give us a Congresswoman. Well, okay, but I, I was in Washington DC with this woman. We spent a one week together knocking on doors. And even when she's tired and weak, and she's still going. She's still going. She ran me right at me, I tell you. So I am so grateful for your life, man. And for the life of each one of these leaders that I have worked with. The humility of Frank, you never know who Frank is unless Frank tells you or other people around him. The service of Stephen, the heart of amazing service of Stephen. As a thankful, you are one of the leaders of the Christian community in Dallas. Would you come and pray for these leaders?
Our Father and My God, we bless your name. We thank you, we give you glory, we give you honor. We thank you because you are our God. We thank you for strength, we thank you for power. We thank you, O Lord, and My Savior, we pray, O Lord, that even when they are low in their spirit, you will lift them up in the name of Jesus. You will encourage them yourself in the name of Jesus. You say, O Lord, that you are not at the house of Israel to seek you in vain. My Father and My God, I pray that you will replenish them and you will bless them in every way imaginable in the name of Jesus. My Lord and My Savior, I commit them under your protection. Father, continue to protect and guide them in the name of Jesus. Let your Holy Spirit continuously lead them in the name of Jesus. My Lord and My Savior, I pray, O Lord, that in all their ways, Father, let them continue to acknowledge you in the name of Jesus. And let your will and your will they not be done in their life and true them in the name of Jesus. So shall it be in Jesus' mighty name.
Amen.
Amen.
Thank you. Please, can you clap for... Well, this is very important. And we'll talk with that. We go to another face of this meeting tonight. And I am grateful to the city of Dallas. Can we clap for the city of Dallas? Well, this is very important. And we'll talk with that. We go to another face of this meeting tonight. And I am grateful to the city of Dallas. Can we clap for the city of Dallas? The city of Dallas, welcome the team hugely. And I would like to ask in Texas, somebody who is a doyen of the fourth prime in this city, somebody who has served for many, 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 many years, an icon of journalism, in Dallas and this general area, Dr. Esther Davis, to come up, bring the greetings of the city of Dallas.
Thank you so very much. What a treat this is to see all of you here in Bedford, Texas. Last time I came to Bedford, you had no traffic. So I leave Dallas, Texas on a Tuesday and come down 35 and I'm thinking, oh, this is gonna be a treat. And I get to your fair city and you have grown so much. I am a native Texan. I was born and raised in a little place called Conroe, Texas, which is down by Houston. I went to college. I am actually a concert pianist by trade, but I sort of inverted that field completely and got into television, modeling by way of television. Dallas is a splendid city. And Dallas does a lot of things that other cities don't do. And I'm not partial to Dallas. So I want to bring to you and to the delegation some of the, and I have two days to do this. I have two days to do this.
All she will be telling you, she did it in forty-eight...
Forty-eight hours. Let me start, please, with the city of Dallas. They said to, and this is what it looks like. And it says, on behalf, and I'm gonna read just a portion of this, not the complete thing. It's addressed to Ms. Rebecca, to Stephen, to DeeDee, to Dr. Shio, and to me. And it says, on behalf of the mayor and the city council, we want to extend our warmest greetings while you are guests in the Dallas area. We join you in your call for unity and resolve with the large Nigerian diaspora in this city. We look forward to your overview of your week in Washington DC, which basically means that I'm gonna pick your brain, ladies, and I'll go back to my mayor and explain to him what happened to you and what you did while you were in Washington DC. The third paragraph says, should your schedule permit another visit to the United States? Please, please place Texas on the agenda. Our diversity in the state of Texas is one of our greatest treasures. And it's signed by Tanelle Atkins for our new mayor, who is Eric Johnson. Now that's from the city. The second one is from Texas Senate. And that is Ross West. He was probably the easiest one to catch up with because he likes to bowl and I know where he bowls. We had no problem catching up with him. But you know, I'm always impressed with a politician that takes time to say certain things. You know what I mean? So to the delegation, to Ms. Rebecca, he says, although the reason that brings you to the state of Texas is heartbreaking and maddening, I extend my hand out to welcome you. By sharing your pain and your daughter Leah's story, you open up the ears, minds, hearts, and eyes of those that cannot fathom the trials you have had to endure. Second paragraph, no, we stand with Leah. Second paragraph, "No, we stand with Leah. We welcome you and your delegation to Dallas." The last paragraph says, "We pray that your visit here in Texas will shed light to the horror that many still face and that the grace of God provide for you safe journey back to your country. And it's signed, 'My serious regards, Ross West, District 23.'" Ross West chairs three important committees. One is statewide, one is the southern, across the southern, and he shares one in Washington DC. It's all centered around education. Most politicians have other jobs doing other things. The final one was one I had to wait for, but it was worth it. It is from Congress of the United States, House of Representatives, Washington DC. This is Edith Brines Johnson. "It is my honor to extend a long welcome to you and your group to the Dallas Gulf War Area. Our community, including the large Nigerian diaspora, looks forward to hearing you speak about your daughter and her fight for freedom." So, I'm gonna have to do a second report when I get next week about what you tell me. "As a member of Congress, I have had the privilege of working on pieces of legislation promoting the role of women in the peace-building and conflict resolution process. I also host a World of Women for World Peace, a conference with peace advocates to help highlight women who are taking major steps in promoting a peaceful future for all of us. The First Amendment grants Americans the freedom of religion. As a person of faith, I stand with your daughter and pray for her immediate release." Signed, Edith Brines Johnson.
You know, we women like to, you know, push ourselves forward.
Yes.
You know? We can help it, you know? But self-reflexivity says that this letter was not written to Sharie Agbongi.
Yes.
So, really, I should not be the one sitting here. So, I want the person to whom the letter was written to please come forward. Rebecca, please come forward. The state of Texas is written. There's a letter from the city, there's a letter from the state senate, and there's a letter from the Congress of the United States. So, they, all the layers of government in Texas is saying, "We commit to Leah, we commit to Rebecca, and we commit to all the other people that are in our swing, they are Adara Chief Don, the Beth Nueh Proctor." So, I would like our inimitable Dr. Davis to please present these letters to Mama Leah.
Mr. Rebecca, it's my pleasure to do this. I think women are going to change the world, period. And I say that often.
Yes.
I say it very often. Because today, in 2019, we, the last election, we elected 121 women to Congress. If you don't think things are gonna change in Washington, they most definitely are. So, I want you, Ms. Rebecca, this is a letter from the Congresswoman. I need to report to her when I get back next week. I will go and tell her what you, what your thoughts are. So, I wanna give you that one letter. Thank you. As the city of Dallas, our new mayor has not even taken, he's taken office, he has been sworn in, he has had the inauguration, but he is not in office yet. He's, he's transitioning. So, this is our second letter from the mayor, the new mayor of the city of Dallas. And we are the ninth largest city in the United States. And it is signed by his first aide and a gentleman named Tanell Atkins. Now, this is really important. Tanell Atkins is Chair of Economic Development in Dallas, Texas. That's a big role. He's more important than the mayor, actually. And there are copies, the, the first lady, the Congresswoman wanted you to have the magazine about women. And I have copies for everyone in your delegation. They make copies in their offices for me. I got lots of stuff here, haven't I? And I'm gonna give you, this is from the senator. The senator, and this tells you all on his side, all the committee where he belongs to. So, when you get a moment and you acquire time, look at the other departments that he is responsible for, he has to report on. And I want you to know that I will definitely be following up with him to see what he has done. Okay, now, I'm gonna give you all of this.
So that we can give enough time today, visitors from Nigeria. I want to quickly invite a lady who is actually from northern Nigeria, but is now resident in Washington DC, to tell us briefly some of these challenges that women face. The cultural norms that prevent certain actions. So, is it okay if I ask, Magna Carimi, I'm sorry, I guess. Magna Faith Karimi, a community leader, a journalist from Washington DC, originally from Taraba State, Nigeria. So, please come on maybe for two, three minutes.
Hi, everybody. I wanna thank everyone for this opportunity to speak. First of all, I'd like to thank the leadership of ICOM, International Committee in Nigeria. We are president today here. I'd love to thank secret Christian Christians. I'd love to thank DeeDee and Frank for the opportunity. I'd love to thank my colleague Esther Davis, my boss Doug West, I'd love to thank her for the opportunity. To be, I'd love to thank Esther Shario for this opportunity to speak to everyone about the concerns, the everyday struggle that is northern Nigerian women. Just like he earlier introduced, I'm Magna Faith Karimi, I'm from Taraba State in Nigeria. I was raised in Katana State in Nigeria. And I'm a divorcee, a mother of three girls, thirteen, twelve, and nine. And I relocated to the United States of America in 2010 to be permanent U.S. President. I was married before, but I'm now single. I have a first degree in economics, a first master's degree in business administration, and a second master's degree in organizational leadership. I said all that to say this, the northern Nigerian woman is the woman that is marginalized. A northern Nigerian woman is typically conservative. Stereotype is an introvert because of the culture. My mother, for one, was married, or is married to a northern man in Nigeria and didn't have to work. She couldn't work for over twenty-seven years. Not because she didn't want to, she had a degree in aviation, but because she was married to a very, 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 very serious and culturally rich, a northern man. She couldn't work, she couldn't work and we were being raised in Katana. She had raised six children, but she didn't, she wasn't afforded the opportunity to work. And whenever they would have meetings, my mother couldn't even like, she wasn't allowed to sit in the midst of people. She didn't have a voice. She was relocated to the kitchen and raising us as children. The, the, the outside world is, is separated from the reality that is a northern Nigerian woman. And most often than not, even when we get the opportunities to become exposed and find ourselves in environments like this, it's somewhat difficult to adapt, it's somewhat difficult to fit in because of the narrative that we have, you know, that has been imparted, you know, in us from, from the foundation. And so, when I relocated to the United States of America, I was one person that was kind of lost. I didn't fit in to the Nigerian diaspora and community. I was lost because I, I wasn't comfortable with the Eurovision people, I wasn't comfortable with the evil people, and then my sisters were not necessarily here. And so, when I would learn that, you know, my sisters, my northern sisters would come to the United States of America to talk about not only what we deal with on a daily basis culturally and socially, but to talk about the oppression that we now experience, you know, that transcends, you know, the civil, civil society or civil societal struggle in Nigeria, which would be the banditry, kidnappings, and of course, the oppression of the minority groups and the Christian, Christian villages in, in Nigeria. And so, I, Magna Faith Karimi, against hope, against adversity, I am sitting here to testify and to align with, and to support my northern sisters who have decided, who have chosen to put themselves in Am's way, who have chosen to lead the way, to say that enough is enough, that we have had, that we will not be mute, we will not be silenced, that we will not be relegated to the kitchen, we will not be butchered like animals, that we have a right to live, we have a right to education, we have a right to speak, we have a right to choose what careers we wanna pursue, we have a right to our religion, we have a right to travel wherever we wanna go. We have a right, I, Magna Faith Karimi, I have a right to be seated in this chair, just like anybody else in this world does have a right to sit in this chair. And I, I'm a northern Nigerian woman.
Wow. What a speech. Well, I must say that the person that has even more right today and for whom we are advocating is Leah. Leah has a right to be free.
Yes.
Can I say that again?
Yes, absolutely.
Leah has a right to be free.
Yes.
And we are asking the whole world to please join us in crying out and asking Babuari and Pastor Oshibajo to help us listen to our story. And the same way you freed all the other Muslim girls. We are not being new pity, or we are saying, "Please use the same mechanism." Let our Leah be set free. Leah's mother is here. I will step off the stage and allow her in a short while to tell you the story herself. She will come with an interpreter, wonderful Dr. Gloria, and they will sit here and tell us this story. It's a heartbreaking story. It's a story that makes me weep. Because I also am a father of a sixteen-year-old Nigerian girl, Nigerian-American girl. I don't know what I would do if I were in her shoes. May I invite Mrs. Sharie to the stage?
I don't want to even start with crying, but I want to say thank you so very much for those of you that gave us this platform. ICOM, Stephen, Kai, who was in Nigeria, to get us here. Save the persecuted Christians. Frank, Daphne, awesome, strong, unstoppable DeeDee. The Waddes. And our wonderful sister, Sam. Thank you. Thank you all. We are grateful. We are very grateful. This is a big privilege that we have been looking for back home, advocating for Leah's release. God just decided to open this door and give us this opportunity, stand with us. I present to you Leah Sharibu's mother. I will ask her to speak, her heart out while she is here, and then I will interpret it to you. But first of all, thank you so very much. We are grateful. State of Texas, ma, you don't have words. But thank you so very much for this great honor from our doctor representing the girls in Nigeria. God bless you and all of them that gave us this award. Please send our message back that we are deeply appreciative and grateful. And Rebecca and her family, her husband Nathan, and her only son again, Leah's younger brother, Donald, are saying thank you, Dallas. Thank you all. I greet you all in the name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. I am very grateful to all of you for your prayers and for your encouraging words and for these open doors. I am very grateful. Today, I am in Dallas.
Amen.
I have never thought I would step here. I have only been to Abuja in Nigeria. I am grateful. Thank you very much. I am here to plead with you all, seated here, to please continue to pray for Leah, to continue to pray for my family. And I'm here to plead with your government, to plead with your administration, to plead with your president, and to plead with all of you, Dallas, United States of America. Help me so that my daughter can be back home, she can be released. My daughter Leah has not committed any crime. Leah refused to relance her Christian faith. That is the only crime, that is the crime. That is why Leah is still in captivity. Thank you very much. We want to let you know that today is a very precious time. These two weeks that we've been here has been so impactful. And we want to plead with you. Like our sister Faith said, we are from the northeastern part of the country where Boko Haram started and is still raging. Boko Haram literally means Western Education Forbidden. Women, girls- Women, girls are not allowed to have anything to do with education. We are privileged to be Christians. That is why we have gotten the opportunity to go to school. And that is why we are standing with all our young girls and women in the northeastern part of the country. We have the middle part of the country. They will come and tell you their story. We are pleading with the entire world to give Leah her freedom. Because Leah represents thousands of girls who are daily kidnapped, abducted, scared to go to school because their schools are on a daily basis being attacked by Boko Haram. Please help us, help us, help us, help the Nigerian girls, help the Nigerian church. That is all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Excuse me, sorry, um, I'm breaking this program. This woman sitting here has been traumatized. Her daughter was abducted. And you know what? I have two boys. Until your faith is tested, you don't, you won't know whether you can stand as a Christian without doing something. For over one year, this woman has been traumatized, no support for her, even by her whole country and government. So please pray for her. But we are sure, we have taken impunity to try and win.
Amen.
You know, what they're saying, even I as a Nigerian, um, for many years did not understand it. Then the Lord said to my heart, I'm a Christian minister, to go to the northeast of Nigeria. As I speak to you, all your regions, that you cannot, you cannot, if you're a Christian, it's been wiped off. And you guess what? The people bear the brood of all of this. We started this story that we said children can come and go to free. Mothers were still afraid to send their girls. Now, this is a school that is run by Christians. Because you know what they told me? They told me, we don't know what would happen between school and the house. So we cannot send our daughters to school because between school and the house, somebody will just steal them. Look, we need to pray for Leah's mother. And our state senate, I would like, I would allow Dr. Davis to lead us. Because there is definitely something we can do as state senate. Our voices need to be heard.
Yes.
Definitely, Texas doesn't do anything small. Whatever Texas do is large, okay? Everything in Texas is big, and we are grateful for that. It's a gift from God, you know. I'm giving up for Texas. And I want it to end here. I speak to my leaders who are in the Nigerian diaspora. We cannot sit on the fence because we are South Ghanaans and because we are in Texas. We have to do something, or else this fire will come inside our own village and chase us. So what can we do? These people, Didi, everyone, they have done what they can. I'm sorry, I shouldn't be making a speech, but I just, I don't know what. You know, we met for dinner last night, and I sat at the table, and I'm just thinking about all the implications, and tears just started falling down my face. Stephen quickly stopped me. I started up and said, "Let's rejoice. Let's rejoice because God has done mighty things."
Amen.
I said, "God has done mighty things."
Amen.
But God can do more.
Yes.
More for Leah, more for the girls in northern Nigeria, as a father of girls.
Say a word. Thank you so very, very much, sir. Leah's mom here has the foundation called Leah Foundation. And that foundation, our daughter is not here back. But Icon, Kai, and Peter from Dallas here set up that foundation in honor of Leah. The girls that are in that tree have been taking away the Christian girls and have taken, have been taken to safer places to go to school. Because since the schools were attacked, they stopped going to school. So they made a way for those girls to go to school. Our daughter is still in captivity, yet she had the heart to say, "Yes, let's move all the girls to safer places," as I did for my daughter. Thank you.
Steve, I'll be brief. What can we do? We are Americans.
We know how to fight. We are Americans, and we know that once we make up our minds to do something, we're going to get it done. This past year, I was on the board of a small school in South Dallas. They wanted to close the school. The school had five hundred students. The superintendent comes and says, "Dr. Davis, what can we do?" I said, "How many parents do you have?" He says, "I've got a thousand parents." "I need the parents in a meeting tomorrow night." We came out of the meeting deciding to send five hundred faxes a day to the governor of Texas. I'm gonna tell you what happened. I had parents to come in three times a day, just doing nothing but sending faxes, the same fax to the governor's office. Week number two, the governor, Greg Abbott, says, "Stop these people from sending these faxes." Because they couldn't send, they couldn't send anymore faxes. They, we boggled the fax lines. Within a month, they opened the schools back up. And Americans, you know exactly what I'm talking about. I remember, my vivid memory is of the Coca-Cola company, the largest soft drink company in the world. Put out a new Coke about twenty years ago. Does anybody remember that? We didn't like the new Coke. Within a month, when we didn't have cell phones in those days, and we didn't have this and this and this, within a month, what did Coca-Cola do? Put the new, the old Coke back on the shelf and put the new Coke behind the old Coke. Am I right or wrong?
Sure.
What I'm gonna ask you to do, we have cell phones, and they're not cell phones, they're computers. Why can't we stand, and I don't know, but you count how many people in this room? Why for the next, until July fourth, we've got a holiday coming up, that we call the Fourth of July?
Yes.
You can get the attention of your legislator. You know why? Because it's an election year. Everything that has ever been done in this country was done during an election year. And I don't want to go into all of the whys and what we have done. But from now until the Fourth of July, let's make a pact to contact, to contact your state senator. Because we've already got some of them on board. And you can send them, I'm sorry? Thirty, yes. You can send them a text every day. Have your friends do the same thing. I have five grandsons. I asked one of them one day, I said, "How many friends do you have on your phone?" He said, "Twelve hundred." "What are you doing with twelve hundred friends? You need to be running a business or something." So what we did, when all five of them had these phones, and we got them to do one thing, they were surprised at what they could do. Send a fax or a text to your congressperson every day. Every congressional office has a media department. Somebody's going to pay attention. So if you decide to send, let's start with fifty. There are thirty people in this room, thirty times fifty is a hundred and fifty going to the congresspeople. That's how we get attention in this country. A couple of years ago, we didn't like the truckers on our freeways. Anybody remember that? We wanted the truckers to have their own freeway. What happened, Americans? They built I-20. Because we didn't want the truckers from NAFTA coming through our neighborhoods. We have done all of this before. So let's make an agreement that we're going to call the same thing that everybody's talking about today. Let's stand with Leah. In nineteen ninety-six, President Bush sent in a troop of Marines to Liberia. Because the president of Liberia went to Washington and asked him to do so. The troops were there six months, they came out, but the noise level went down. This is very important to me. I had traveled a lot in the last twenty years. There are girls being abducted in the United States. We had a girl abducted about two months ago. Took them six hours to find that child. Six hours. They put the message out on a cellphone. Does anybody remember that? They found a girl in a hotel room with a gentleman. Six hours. We've had girls lost in this country. We have had girls that come up missing, have a wreck. We have cell phones that can find a kid in a ditch that has had a wreck. So I know we can do something about this. But that's what I'm going to ask you to do. Use our cell phones, contact your congresspeople, get to know them on a regular basis. If a politician starts ignoring me, he's in big trouble. He or she is in big trouble. Because they have an itinerary. And I want to know what the itinerary is, and I can find them on that, with that itinerary. We've got to get serious about this, because what is happening over the, in other parts of the country is going to come right in your back door. That's what I believe. So we can do this, since you want to know what to do from a media perspective. Your neighborhood meetings, your church meetings after church. We have started this campaign for the next two weeks, and we want some attention from the current administration to do something about this.
I am sure that we can, that we can do this. In Texas, we do everything big. And we will do this. So thank you. We cannot stay quiet. We are going to stand with Leah. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. My own heart is touching. I am moved. I am grateful. I'm grateful to the people sitting here. There are other stories that we want to tell, and I would like us to tell it pa pez. Uh, the next story I would like to tell is that of my wonderful Adara people. Now, I tried everything to meet great Aleri in Abuja, and she had to come and meet me in Dallas. So welcome to the stage, Aleri Magadi. The daughter of the chief of the Adara. For no reason, the chief of the Adara was imprisoned. And for one hundred days, no charge, no, no, nothing. Yeah. Marcy, who is also from Kaduna State. She's Adara too. Marcy, who is also Adara, an Adara there, is also sitting here. Marcy, I believe, was kidnapped.
Yes.
Marcy was kidnapped, and she spent ten days with the kidnappers. So this is. So these brave ladies, and if you know what is the situation in Kaduna State, you will know that what these girls, these women are doing is absolutely, they are Marines. They're Marines. They've gone into the war zone. Because there are challenges in Kaduna State. I would like them to tell their story.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Thank you so much for listening to us. Um, I'm still trying to get used to being in front of the microphone and camera. I'm an event photographer, so I'm always behind the scenes, so this is all still new to me. Uh, my life changed on the eighteenth of February this year, two thousand and nineteen. That was when my father was called into the police station and arrested. And what led to that arrest was that on the nineteenth of October in two thousand and eighteen, the chief of Adara in Kaduna State was kidnapped by Fulani herdsmen. He and his wife were kidnapped, and four of his aides were killed on the spot. The Adara Chiptown is the largest Christian community in Kaduna State. Kaduna State is a state where it's fifty-fifty, fifty percent Christian, fifty percent Muslims. So after he was abducted on the nineteenth, the wife was released the next day. And on the twenty-sixth of October in two thousand and eighteen, after the Adara people had paid a ransom to the Fulani people, he was shot and killed on the twenty-sixth. My father is the waziri of Adara. The waziri's title enables him to be the acting chief in the case where the chief is not available due to sickness or death or whatever reason. He is, he can never be chief. He just holds the chiptown for a new one in the storm. So after the chief was murdered, the state government made an announcement and said the chief of Kachiya was murdered. And that was what raised concerns, why it was being referred to as chief of Kachiya and not the chief of Adara. And on investigation, we found out that on the twenty-ninth of May in two thousand and eighteen, the governor, Madam Nasri Elufai, a house of Fulani Muslim, had abolished the Adara chiptown. So Adara no longer existed in Kaduna State. Remember that this is the largest Christian community, and he did this without the knowledge of the Adara people. That is wrong and unjust on all levels. So after my father and all the other elders found out what happened, they did everything they could to dialogue with the state to reverse whatever it was. And in doing that, they realized that since the May twenty-ninth, the government had been communicating with the late chief, trying to make him agree to the balkanization of the kingdom, where they placed us under a house of Fulani emir. Of course, he refused to do that. And you have to know that as a chief, he's chief for life. Whatever the governor does, he cannot remove him as chief until he dies. So we suspect that's one of the reasons why he was murdered. January two thousand and nineteen, my father and the other elders took the state government to court to reverse what he had done. And a week after that, on the tenth of February two thousand and nineteen, Adara community was attacked, ten people were killed. Ten people and the big, making eleven people were killed. There was no word from the government, even when the community leaders had complained about it. And then on the fifteenth of February two thousand and nineteen, the governor comes on TV and makes an announcement that sixty-six Fulani people were killed. This is a community where Adara are killed. For the past two years, we've been attacked, kidnapped, killed. And the governor had never even acknowledged that there was, had been attack on the Adara people. And if you know how the Fulani people work in Nigeria, if they hear one of them is killed, they gather themselves from all parts of Nigeria to come to where they feel they were attacked, to retaliate, they call it, even though they are always the attackers. So the governor making that statement to us, the Adara people, we felt it was him indirectly trying to instigate an attack on the Adara people. Because even in Kaduna State, they will tell you that it was the Adara that attacked the Fulani. There is no case whatsoever of the Adara people attacking any community. And the attacks on the Adara community, they call it a herder farmer conflict. But it can't be so, because these attacks happen at six thirty to nine AM. But it can't be so because these attacks happen at six-thirty to nine AM in the mornings, broad daylight. These Fulani people come, at least four hundred in number, attacking different communities of about a hundred and fifty people. How do you attack women and kids and elderly people and call it a farmer-harder conflict? Those two-month-old babies and six-month-old babies are not farmers. So how do you come in and kill them and then the government is saying, oh, don't worry about it, it's farmer-harder conflict? We have babies in diapers. Before I came here, I met a six-month-old whose head was, they tried to cut off her head, but it didn't stop, she's alive with half of her head out. We have two-month-olds, we have mothers, we have a mother who's, she had four kids and was nine months pregnant. Three of her kids were slaughtered right in front of her. One survived, her stomach was stomped on. The baby died, she had to be taken to the hospital for the baby to be out. Her limb, her left hand was cut off, her whole face was cut off. They are all Adara people. We have seven-year-old Badamacy who was being shot at his seven-years-old. He picked up his three-year-old sister and carried her to safety. He had a bullet in his stomach and a bullet in his hand. They were shooting at him while he still ran to safety. These people are alive. And in the midst of all this, the leaders in Adara were arrested. Nine of them were in prison. They were picked up at different times. My father was picked up on the eighteenth of February and he spent a hundred and three days in prison. Not an executive prison, a prison with murderers and armed robbers. He was in a cell. I don't want to begin to tell you how it felt like having to, what we went through. My brother is here. I don't want to tell you what we went through when he was in prison. And in all of this, the governor kept telling the narrative that the Adara people were the problem. The police commissioner of Kaduna State distanced himself from the figures the governor was saying. Because from sixty-six Fulanis, he said the number was one hundred and thirty-one Fulanis killed. Remember, this is a fifty-fifty Christian-Muslim state. He would never say there was a crisis and people were killed. He would say Fulani were killed. It was like the Adara, it didn't matter. Remember, our chief was killed, that's a story on its own. Our chiptown, I am now under a Muslim emir as it stands today. And apart from that, the elders been locked up for over a hundred days. They were freed on the thirty-first of May for lack of evidence. Till today, nobody is held responsible that the state government had locked up a first-class chiptown, locked up their elders, and nobody is saying anything about it. When we try to talk about it, nobody will pick our story. We gathered together the children of the elders, donated money within ourselves, and paid the media. Nobody will pick our story. The Human Rights Chairman of Nigeria, the former Human Rights Chairman, Professor Odim Hamid, now went on national TV to challenge the governor, telling him to come show him where these Fulani dead bodies were kept. Till date, there's no proof of those Fulani people being killed. Yes, over four hundred Adara women, children, elderly people have been slaughtered like chickens. They come with AK-47s, they kill and they leave. And till date, there is nobody that has been arrested for that. Our Adara youth have been arrested and kept in prison. When we are attacked, they attack us and when we defend ourselves, they come pick us up and lock us up in prison for defending ourselves. Just yesterday, twenty Adara youth were released from prison. Some since February two thousand and eighteen. Lack of evidence, no evidence whatsoever. Yet these children under eighteen have been in prison for over fifteen months. It's ridiculous. And in the midst of all this, I am mad as hell that the Vice President of Nigeria will come to America and say, we're telling lies. The least he can do is to keep quiet. When we try to talk about these issues, the government says, oh, we're better than the last government. We didn't vote them in to compare themselves to the last government. In the previous government, at least people were alive to complain about the government. Now you're fighting for your life so much, you don't even know what policies the government is trying to implement. In Kaduna State now, the same governor, Elufai, brought out a law regulating preachers in Kaduna State, saying that for every preacher in Kaduna State, his license has to be renewed every year. It has to be renewed every year. So that means they're trying to regulate what preachers, the Christian preachers, tell me in church. Because if you don't say what the government wants you to say, then your preacher's license is not renewed. Apart from that, he abolished the indigenous decotermin in Kaduna State. We don't run our government like you do in the states. In Nigeria, if I'm from Kaduna State, whatever the government has for me, a citizen of Nigeria, comes through my state and my traditional council. So if I don't have an Adara chief anymore, because right now, we're at ninety-five percent Adara Christians, but we're under a Muslim emir. So I can't get any rights from there because you know he's not going to give me, he's going to give his Muslim counterparts, even though they're just about two percent of my area. And then in Kaduna State, the governor is now saying, I'm no longer a citizen of Kaduna State. But because it's happening only in Kaduna State, I can't go to another state to get what benefits the federal government has for me. But a Fulani man can come to Kaduna State and be a citizen and get even more rights than I do. So I don't have my tribe, I don't have my state, and then the preachers in my state are not allowed to preach to me. So that's what we're facing now in Kaduna State. We're here because we want to create awareness for what is happening. We're put in prison if we talk about this. So this is a miracle that we're even here to talk about it. And I want to tell everybody today that, just like Esther Deppy said, there is a lot we can do, just tweeting about this story, just putting it on Facebook. It goes a long way because even in Kaduna State, the journalists are not allowed to say the stories of what is happening in Adara chiptown. It's not allowed. And he has already put this into law. So there's nothing we can do about it but to advocate. They were released because of advocates, well, God, of course. God had a hand in everything. And God used an army. They've mentioned their names already, I don't want to go back to that. Save the Presbyterian Christians International Committee on Nigeria went a long way. Before I knew it, the US Embassy had called me. And a month later was when the elders were released because the government couldn't do anything about it. So just speaking about it, creating awareness for it, will go a long way today.
My name is Mercy Mismari. I am an Adara girl. I'm from Kaduna State of Nigeria, Kaduna Luca, Ominu. And I want to tell you how I was kidnapped and kept for ten days by this same Fulani headsmen. The Fulani headsmen are now like a terrorist group in Kaduna State. I and my mom, with two of my cousins, were kidnapped two years back in Kaduna, the same place that was attacked earlier this year. We were kidnapped, ten gunmen came to my house at twelve midnight, all armed to the teeth, and kidnapped us and took us to the, we walked for over fourteen hours to the camp where they kept us. So we stayed there for over ten days. And during our stay there, we saw a lot of other kidnappers and other Fulani headsmen coming from different camps, which means they have different camps around the bush there. We had to walk for fourteen hours and we got to a stage, we couldn't walk again. So they had to bring bikes to take us to their camps. This meant when you get to the camp, you see more than twenty headsmen, Fulanis men, carrying guns, sophisticated weapons that even our military does not have. So these people kidnapped us and they have phones, they make calls, they have informants, people who call them to tell them whenever the bush or their camp is, it's supposed to be raided, and so they get to a safer place. That is why these people cannot be caught, because they have informants. These people have phones, they make calls, like when we were there, they had a conversation, they kept having a conversation with my dad about how much should be paid before we can be released. And after ten days, my dad came with the one five million era, paid them, and instead of releasing us, they beat up my dad, brutalized my dad, and he was almost unconscious. They took my dad down, back to the, because how they operate is, when someone is coming to pay for ransom, you come with the money, someone from the camp will go over to where the person is with the money. You pay the money and then they make a call to the camp and ask them to bring the person before they hand you over to your dad or whoever came with the money. When they came, instead of collecting the money and calling for us to be released, they beat up my dad and then brought my dad back to the camp where me and my mom were. So we stayed at the camp for ten days and then after bringing my dad, the next day, they released us. So this is what's really happening in Kaduna State. In Kaduna State, you can't even travel to Abuja, from Kaduna to Abuja, from Abuja to Kaduna, without getting kidnapped. I just wonder how someone would say that these kidnappings are lies because they are true. I was in a bus the other day and a lady was telling her friend how their friend was kidnapped and then she just laughed and said, oh, she will come back. And this lady was later killed. I'm telling you this because kidnapping is almost normal. You can imagine someone getting kidnapped and someone who say, oh, she will come back. Because it's almost normal right now. Staying in a country where you can get kidnapped, even in your house, on your way to, wherever you are going to. The other day, the governor was on his way to Abuja and he stomped on a roadblock by the kidnappers and he had to park with his security because he had security, so he cannot be kidnapped, of course. So he had to park and then went into the bush looking for the kidnappers. So we saw videos and pictures. So here, I just imagine how someone can say that kidnappings are not going on because even at your place of worship, when you are worshiping, the kidnappers come, they kidnap the pastor, the members of the church, and they take you. These are Christian communities being kidnapped almost on a daily basis. And people are trying hard to conceal this truth. These things are happening and I'm a victim of kidnapping. And these people kidnap you and they beat you up. Sometimes they call my dad on the phone, beat us, and my dad released me. The other day, my phone was ringing, my music was playing. The music used to be my ringtone when we're kidnapped because my dad was using my phone to communicate with the kidnappers. When my dad heard the music, he just told me never to play that music again. Because whenever he hears that music, he remembers when we were kidnapped and the trauma comes with it. So what I'm saying right now and here today is, we need help. We need our government to admit that these things are happening. These things are happening. Why are they covering it up? Innocent citizens are dying. And when you get kidnapped, if your family doesn't look for money to pay these people, they kill you. The government doesn't care, nobody pays, nobody does anything about it. You are just there, it's either you get killed or maybe your people were able to pay and break you back. That is our daily life, that is what we have to live with. And I'll tell you today that if you ask me, I'll give you more than twenty people I personally know that were personally kidnapped. And then people are trying to conceal this truth, this is wrong. Thank you very, very much. And I really want to appreciate Icon, Save the Presbyterian Christians, and others who have really, really helped in bringing us here to create this awareness. We really appreciate it, thank you very much.
Well, these things are so heavy, but we just have to deal with it. Again, the question is, what are we going to do about it? We are free to, you know, just hear and go. Or we are free to also hear and take action. I hope that what we're going to do is, especially we Nigerian diaspora. We that we are questioning this situation because of certain, sudden commitments, because of certain, because we are aligned to certain positions. And it is making it difficult for us to accept that these stories are true. These stories are true. Why would we malign our own government? I'm proud of my country. Proud of my country. I want my country to be just, to be right. I want people to move freely in my country. I don't want this, my daughter, to be afraid of our life. She let the cut out of the bag, she was too excited. I wanted to sneak up right now, but immediately it wasn't working. I wanted to do the Steve Vallow. But let's clap for Aleri's brother, let him come off and be recognized. That's a Texas pride, you know. And I just find, this is also the son of Mr. Bawa Magadi. And please, someone should take the picture so that we can give it to Baba. What we actually wanted to do was to call Baba and say, we are here in Dallas. That the Dallas people are enjoying Bawa and Aleri. You're just sitting there, you're looking cool, I see we are not happy to see your brother. So we are grateful for your life, Aleri. We are grateful for your life, Mercy. Thank you, Bawa, for being a faithful son and taught you an engineer. You went to that engineer's school and you did TDX, that's the code of Y. Okay, those things used to scare me, because they say, TDX. You say, who made kids? TDX. Well, you're welcome in Jesus' name. The Lord bless you. The Nigeria that we desire. Can you step a little bit closer? Okay. Yeah, the Nigeria that you desire, God will grant you to us in Jesus' name. I'm being told something which I'm not understanding. Oh, is Zion?
She's ready. Hi, Marna.
That's my sister.
Your sister from Medina.
Come on, come on, come on, someone is from Kaduna.
Hello.
Hello, Aleri.
Yes.
This is Marna.
Oh, hi. Hello.
Hello.
Yes, so I'm, you're on speaker by the way, everybody can hear you.
Okay, hi, everyone.
Hello from Texas.
Is she with mom?
Oh.
Mom is there, let's talk, let's let mom say hello.
Okay.
Hello, everyone.
Hi, mommy.
Hello, mommy, we love you.
How are you?
Fine, thank you.
We love all of you. The Lord be with you.
Amen.
One touch, one touch.
Thank everyone that is there.
Amen.
The Lord will see you through all day.
Amen.
And we have a word of prayer for you.
Yes.
Father in heaven, we worship you and adore you. Thank you for this opportunity, Aleri and others beneath the United States. Thank you, Lord, for the organizers of this program. Thank you so much, Lord, for this opportunity to express themselves. We thank you very much for the President of the United States.
Yes, Lord, yes, Lord.
And his team. Father, we pray that you bless them.
Amen.
As they are offered to help the less privileged in other countries, to listen to them. And we pray that you fear you.
Amen.
Because you say in your word, enemy they that fear you. And if you have God, the people will be happy. And so we pray, Lord, that you help them to remove the fear of God.
Amen.
So that you be able to do and what he is able to do, and the people will be happy. Father, we thank you so very much for the United States, bless them, you body.
Amen.
Bless them, you body. And Aleire and Haji, shield them from any danger. Help them, oh, God, to do everything in the world in honor of their needs. Thank you because we know you will be more thankful and happy as we imagine because you pray in Jesus' name.
Thank you, mommy. We are to you.
Amen. That sounds like a daughter thing to say. Thank you. Thank you, mercy. We are very grateful. Now, I don't know. I know, I know, I know, I know. Okay, all right. Let's, I'm sure they have taken all the pictures they want. Yes, so, yeah. Thank you very much. Thank you, thank you, thank you. The last on the list of rosters, and then we would have some diaspora response. The last on the list of rosters is our brother from Benue State. Would you like to come up, sir? Our brother Napoleon Adamun. You're welcome, sir. Jihadist situation. I'll just allow someone who has experienced it to just tell us the story, the putting, breaking, and so that we can have some more, a little more time to be able to clap.
I bring greetings from Agatu people of Benue State and the Benue State. And we not want to bore you again with the greetings that we have in the past by my colleagues, the organizers of this program. The privilege of having us around. But I think I will not also be doing the audience well if I will not appreciate you. Because if you, if we don't have, if they don't have the support of all of you sitting here, I am sure bringing us to this place would not achieve anything. As I have to, in God's grace, for all of you for accepting to be here. And I pray that God will bless you for the sacrifices. For me, in Agatu, yes, the story isn't supposed to be brief, but I have to be brief. One, you have been reading about these stories on the net. It's just that so many people try to water it down and to make us think that it is not true. And so I being here is like a confirmation of what has been going on that others think is a lie. In 2013, 5th May precisely, Agatu community was raided across various, so many villages. I lost my uncle, a retired soldier, who was supposed to be the eldest in my family. I lost a cousin that's dead and other people in my own village. So there were those losses too in other communities. And who are these attackers? Of course, the Fulani. What I want us to know precisely here too is that when people say it is a farmer headers, as the story has always been, I want to say it is not a farmer headers situation. I agree up to meet my parents and our community, giving room to the Fulanis to come and graze during crisis and go back. Once the rains cast, the farmers will start their farming business and so the Fulani have to go. But this set of Fulanis who stay with us, at that time, they will always come with their women, there's their wives and children. But the set of Fulanis that we have now that come to carry out this attack are young people fully armed. That first attack in 2013 witnessed a very massive death and destruction of lives, properties. And that is what they also took, take interest in. Destroyed houses and even public utilities. In a village in Agatu, the school, primary school was destroyed. The head center was destroyed. Another, police station destroyed. I don't know how many of those people are farmers. Now, when this people come from that 2013 to 2016, when it was, we witnessed, it was hit, there was about 17 attacks and I have records of them on different days, killing different people. I think over 400 people were killed. I have records of each family and the person's kid. And the houses burnt. In the communities where they have come, there are records. And these things are verifiable things. So I don't know who we say they are not lying. You said anybody to Agatu now, they will lead you to those communities where the destructions have been carried out. And so I have not come here to tell you any big belief story but they are being. This thing continued until it escalated to other communities in Benue State. When it started, and it was always been assumeded to be the farmer headers, until it extended to the local government of our present government, Governor Sabo Otu, Guma Local Government. And that attack continued for a long time. And across, in that community, across other communities, we have almost 29 attacks on different days. And they don't go without casualties. For Agatu, when these things were going on, we don't believe in IDPs. So once they go, attack and go, we come back, stay on that risk if in the community where all the houses were destroyed. Then, in Guma and other places, I know IDP camps were raised and today we still have people in IDP camps. Why are we saying this? And what can you do? Why do we have to begin to cry out if the government of Nigeria, for any reason, on any of these locations, raise a voice to talk about these attacks? I'm not sure I should be here to talk about this. But there was no voice coming from the government, particularly the Fulan government. And when the hit was too much, it was when Governor Sabo Otu decided to enact a law prohibiting open grazing. And that would have cost him his second term because forces from outside were against him and wanted him to cancel that. And he said, "No." And today, he's standing on it. If you open your, the post that have been sent recently, following, the senior citizens claim that it is the farmer headers. You will now note, take note that actually, these things are not correct. People have been attacking all this. And we don't have anybody and anywhere to run to. And so when this opportunity came and I was asked to come here, I said, "Ah, this is an outside prayer because I know that it's much that the government of the United States of America can do in view of the assistance that they have also been given to nations under crisis situations like this to ensure the welfare of the people." Then why are the people not getting it? And I speak to you, we have relations also even here. When I came here, why I left my seat to answer a call was because my cousin, who stays here, came out. These are things that they have also be at the receiving end because whether you are in Agatu or not, you have something to worry about. Because once it happens, they are running to you in town or they are running for help from you because the government is not doing anything. As I speak with you, to today, nobody has been able to do anything to reset to the people that have been displaced. We are farmers. We are fishermen. We have the land. But there is no security. Most of our young people are already running away from our communities and settling in other communities. And I know that that poses a very serious danger for our future generation. Young ones, these attacks does spare them. Even primary school age, young people have pictures of this and the way they mutilate people. Well, I feel there's much that all of you seated here can do just like our mother tries to also sensitize you. And it's much we can do because you have relations also in Nigeria where you left. And you have linked to all of them. They have these stories to tell. We want to just, uh, a word to just hear that this is what's happening and people are just lying about it. Thank you very much for giving us the attention. I hope bless you.
Be respected in the nation of Nigeria. All we're asking for is that in this situation of injustice, the government of Nigeria should ask as an impartial arbiter, why in all these attacks, Agatu, Dabachi, Chibok, Adara, Kajuru, in this room they don't, these are places separated by hundreds and thousands of hours. And it is happening at the same time. And in all those places, no one, not a single person has been prosecuted for this violence. Is that just? Are we a failed state? I mean, these are questions we need to be asking each other. And we don't need, like my people will say, to hide behind one finger because you will not be covered. Again, I come back to that plea. How can you negotiate to release 100 and something girls and the only Christian girl among them is still in captivity two years later? We think that smells like odious. What do you think?
Yes, yes.
In America, we don't like odious. We don't like odious. Everybody talk about their right. Even we Nigerians that we come here and God has given us the privilege of being in this nation, we live in a country of laws. And all we are asking is that Nigeria also become a country of laws. I'll allow some responses from the Nigerian diaspora. Pastor Tywo, would you like to say a word?
Oh, it's Tywo, no, no.
I think from all we've had, and just to go away, I think we need to appeal to the government of Nigeria. Something needs to be done and needs to be done urgently. That's one thing that is very important to note. And I don't know if we can continue, you know, to cover this whole, like, is being done. Because when people like the former president of Nigeria, Chief Obasugio, came out to say, "Yes, there's something going on." With Tewa Danjuma, you know, I don't think they just woke up in one day and just decide to say that there is something going on here. They are systematic wiping out of the Natan Christians. I believe, you know, we are urging the president to do something and to do it quickly because if we continue in this way, there might not be Nigeria again. Because from what we've heard, you know, there is no doubt that there is some ethnic cleansing. We should call it, we should call it spade, spade. There is systematic ethnic cleansing. And the Natan Christians are being targeted. So the president cannot continue to hide under the notion that this is just an etman and farmers there, you know, whatever conflict, you know, this cannot continue to happen. And we, I'm not blaming anybody, but I think the federal government can do more.
Let's have this more ready. Would you like to say something quickly? Or no?
I don't mind.
Please quickly.
Well, thank you for the opportunity for you all to be here. I'm a mother of five daughters. So I know what it's like. And I've been in a situation where my girls, you know, it's been a long battle, you know, where they were taken unjustfully. So I know the feeling of what she's going through. It's just that hers is much more worse. So I believe, I'll just type into one of my daughters who does international affairs. And I was telling that we, this is a just cause for all six of us. We've got to do something. But I am a bit disappointed that even though we're Americans, that our fellow Nigerians are not in large amounts here. You know, we'll be, I mean, we need to really do a lot of work of our wellness. Our value system is really messed up in some levels. This is not what just we Americans can do, but you know, actually as Christians, we should, in every prayer meeting, you know, I mean, there's a tendency that sometimes we want to live in an oblivion, oblivious state. But we need to, you know, as a, as a, as a principal, I mean, Sister had said here, mobilize people with texting, keep on bringing it, putting it before their face, you know, doing whatever we can, talking to the vice president, whatever we can help. Bring it, do it, break, break the borders, whatever we need to do to even get to talk to all these past presidents, not just President Trump, all of them. And I want to thank God for what President Trump has been doing, especially with Israel. I also feel opportunity for us to get the Prime Minister of Israel as well, raise up vigilante groups. We need strong vigilante groups that are, they are daring. I think, I met a man not too long ago, a former veteran, and he had said, he said that all it takes is for Nigeria to give them permission to come in. He said they don't care, they will invade Boko Haram. He said they are veterans, they are former veterans. He said they will get there. But if the president doesn't allow that for Nigeria, they can't come in, all these bureaucracy. So let's just keep praying and keep talking, you know. Thank you. We love you, man. Don't worry.
I have another Nigerian here, but I put him in. Please, come on.
Thank you very much. First, I want to celebrate my mom. I'm, I'm Nigerian, so everyone that is a mother is my mother. I, I honor the strength of character and has preserved you and we pray that God will see you through this and will have the opportunity to see Leah released for all of us. Uh, as I sat invited to listen to for the last, um, almost hour and a half, I, I was slightly conflicted because I'm born and raised Nigerian, but for the last twenties, almost twenty-two years, I've lived outside Nigeria. And my struggle, the lady that spoke before me echoed in some form. A look for the average American, this seems a little more complex. The underlying story is very simple. But the complexity comes from when you hear the diversity of the Nigerian body politic. I'm raised in the southern part of Nigeria and lived there for the twenty-plus years until I moved to the States. I feel there's a big responsibility that lies with Christians in the southern part of Nigeria. I say this as someone that just returned from Nigeria three days ago. And for the first time, I had the opportunity of visiting an IDP camp in Kaduna. So I was in Bakoo, where most of the displaced Adaras are home currently. And I had the opportunity of being in an IDP camp in Joss. And I heard firsthand the stories of the killings. What I find very sad is the fact that the average Southern Christian in Abuja is disconnected from this. That doesn't, that is even worse for the average Christian in Lagos or Port Harcourt. They know nothing of what is going on. And so that I put context in it. Where given the statistic that about two million Nigerians in diaspora or here in the United States, the bulk of that are Southern Nigerians, most of whom do not have a clue and would rather not hear the realities of these stories. I think the bigger challenge lies with how do we get Southern Christians, Southern Nigerian Christians, to take responsibilities? In making that interview, when I went to that camp, one of the first things I requested after the organization I work with, Global Alliance Blasted Rockwell, Texas, that gave about $10,000 worth of humanitarian aid to that camp, I asked to interview firsthand people who had husbands, spouses, children killed. And just hearing the goal of the stories, I caught myself as a Southern Christian repenting and asking how to forgive me. I think the greater negligence lies with Christians in the South. We've grown up over a generation or two and bought into this line that the average Northerner is Muslim and we really don't care for. And even when we become born again and accept Christ and work with him, the deep prejudice lines that are divided by racial prejudice still underlines our inability to communicate love. The deep injustice that is reflected in all these communities in the Northeast, in the middle belt, in Kaduna only happens because Christians that are deeply prejudiced in the South don't care. And that's the reason, that's the flat-out truth. I'm a Southerner and I've had to go through the last two, three years of personal repentance and get involved in the work in Northern Nigeria. The bulk of the churches, the big churches you see here in the United States back home are Southern dominated, we don't care. The North is disseminated by terror. The South is disseminated by error. Wrong teaching has created apathy and we don't care. There has to be a greater responsibility of Christians in the South, either in diaspora or in Nigeria, to realize, just like Dr. Martin Luther King said, injustice toward anywhere threatens justice everywhere. It's not just it's going to pump to roost here in the States. If the reality is the South has already started feeling the effect of this and at some point in some form, what some of the things we've talked about here, there has to be a speaking to Southern Christians in the Dallas area, in Texas, to take a greater responsibility for our nation. We will ask, and I told them in Kaduna, not knowing this will happen, I told them when I left the camp, I said, we don't have answers, but we will not keep quiet as we pray for you. Please keep praying for us. I believe this, this opportunity has been nothing short of divine, but the greater commitment to live here and speak to Southern Christians in diaspora, I think we must think about. Thank you.
My name is Odudotun Albert Idou. I was born in the northern part of Nigeria, to be precise, Jiba. And there was a time I used to speak very fluent Hausa and giving prayer in Hausa because I schooled there in Zaria and before moving back to the South. And then I've been here for well over twenty years now, so. But nevertheless, whatever is happening back home in Nigeria is still very much of concern to me. Because, you know, a river that forgets, you know, the source from where it comes from will eventually dry off. I am pained so much by all that I've been hearing over there. And I want to first of all, you know, congratulate those of you who came with Rebecca Leah, Rebecca Sharibu, the mother of Leah, and every one of you who has spoken. I want to thank also the, uh, lady from the Dallas city, Dr. Davis. I want to really thank you for, you know, bringing all the layers that just to show your appreciation and to show your sympathy with this family. And of course, the young ladies that I'm seeing here, they are all the eight mates of my, my daughters and my granddaughters, you know. So it's really painful to, to hear all that is going on in this, you know, in our country. I, I know that thank God revival starts small usually. That's one thing that just grazes my heart when I was just listening. And the Lord spoke to me just crazy that this is just a little bit of revival that is going on. And we all know how Azusa started. And if you're like revivalists in the world. So I believe that Mission, the Mission's Bible church, right? Am I correct with you? Because when I saw the name, you, you are starting something very great, something very great. The end of which you may, you know, you don't, you probably have no idea. And I know that certainly God is in this, what has begun today. God is in it and I pray and we shall continue to pray. I am a member of the CLIP, that's the Christian Leaders Interdominational Prayer for CLIP. And I will present this to them. And of course, thank God for technology. I believe that things are already going on into every part of the world right now. So we will continue praying and whatever areas of help that we might be called to do, we should rest assured that we will, you know, put our hands, you know, in it. Thank you very much, God bless you.
Thank you very much. Well, our team has applied to catch in a few minutes. I would like us to pray and meet them in there.
Heavenly Father, we thank you. Ancient of this, thank you for the lightness. All mighty God, so thou be all the glory in Jesus' name. We commit to love this program that we have done this day. Love, they shall not just end there. Father, as we go out, meet this tree that your children are making unto your name. Father, go with them, go ahead of them. Make up for them all in the name of Jesus' name. Thank you, love, because we can say a prayer in Jesus' name.
Well, I thank everyone for the grateful. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Thank you, the, to the team for coming. And I, I, we, I, I promise you that we will not relent on our effort.